Mrs. Cron, will you call the roll please?
Mrs. Vanis Clennett?
Here.
Mrs. Cohen?
Here.
Mrs. Dolan?
Here.
Mrs. Fieldery?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Walters?
Here.
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
Dr. Yornell?
Here.
Okay, we will start with student and staff recognition. Dr. Rattigan?
Hey, good evening, everyone. As we normally do, we have some exciting news to share with you about some of our wonderful students, so I'd like to start out with Jasmine and Jessica. They would come forward, please, so I can tell you about their great success. These juniors, raise your hand when I call your name, Jasmine Shavu and Jessica Reed, have been chosen to join the Cavalcade of Bands Honor Band and will be marching in the 2019 Tournament of Roses Parade on January 1st, 2019. When complete, the band will be made up of approximately 150 students from the tri-state area. The Cavalcade Honor Band is one of the 16 bands that will be performing at the parade. A total of 120 bands sent applications, and the Cavalcade Honor Band was the only one chosen from our region. So Jasmine and Jessica, we will be watching for you on the New Year's Day Parade. Great job. We are proud of you. Okay, if I could please have the Odyssey of the Mine Team from the high school up front. This group from the high school will compete in the World Championships next month. That's right, the World Championships. Since September, team members, raise your hand when I call your name, Alyssa Anderson, Anna Dent, Gavin Kubler, Madeline Lang, Carly Levy, Ashton Mullik, and Thomas Reed have worked together to solve an assigned problem that involved creating a humorous performance centered on a science fiction hangout that includes original creatures, food, and a search for space treasure. The team developed an original script and designed and produced a theatric performance, including design and construction of a portable set as well as props and costumes. The competition also involves a spontaneous session where teams are presented with a problem they have to solve on the spot in just a few minutes, testing their mental agility, creativity, engineering skills, and teamwork. While team coaches, raise your hand, Linda Reed and Brian Kubler supervise the team, OTM rules dictate they were not allowed to help in any way. Everything about their performance, from the script to the costumes and sets, all of it was 100% envisioned and created by the students. The team won second place at the OTM Regional Competition in March and advanced to the World Competition as one of only two Pennsylvania teams in their division to win at the state level. The OTM World Competition, the largest creative problem-solving competition in the world, is a four-day event, May 23rd to 26th, at Iowa State University. OTM has a rich history here at Pen Ridge with several state titles and three World Championships. Last year, the team from Penn Central, which included many of these same students, took fifth place at the World Competition. This year, the district entered five teams in the competition, four of which qualified to compete at the state level. And Mr. Joe Ferry has a surprise for you from the Education Foundation.
On behalf of the foundation, I'd like to present you this check for $500 to defray the cost of your trip to Iowa State.
And now may I have our future Business Leaders of America group come forward. They're here with their coach, one of our high school teachers in the Business Department, Ms. Julian Akona. So these are our future business leaders, three of whom have qualified for Nationals in Baltimore at the end of June. Please raise your hand when I call your name. Cole Canastraci, Connor Frisch, and Anthony Marcantuenio took second place in Sports and Entertainment Management at the State Leadership Conference in Hershey earlier this month to earn their spot in Nationals. We also had three students placed in the top 20 at the state conference. Alana Lee earned eighth place in Business Communications, while Luke Pomper and Sam Ozymo finished sixth in Digital Video Design. While they did not qualify for Nationals, finishing in the top 10 statewide is a wonderful accomplishment.
Thank you, Dr. Rattigan. That's great news about the Cavalcade Honor Band, the Odyssey of the Mine Team going to the World Competition, the FBLA members who placed at the state competition, and the three who are going to the national event. And thank you for sharing that. All right, our next item on the agenda is public comment. The Pen Ridge School Board welcomes public comment. According to Policy 903, we remind everyone of the following: Public comment shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual Board members, district employees, or members of the public. A speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments. To protect the confidentiality and privacy rights of all members of our community, the Board encourages members of the public to direct any comments regarding particular individuals, such as students or district employees, privately to the superintendent or other appropriate administrators or Board members, or to communicate with the Board and superintendent privately by sending an email to PSDSchoolBoard@PenRidge.org. Questions raised and not addressed may be followed up at a later time. Did I did not see on my way in if there was a sign and sheet? Did anybody? Mrs. Cron, was there one, please go through?
There's Cron.
Okay, all right. So we'll wait for Mr. Ferry to bring that in. The first name on the list is Allison Ross.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Allison Ross, and I've been--
Hello?
Yes. Good. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Allison Ross, and I've been a science teacher in the Pen Ridge School District for almost 30 years. I'm not here tonight to speak about negotiations. I've decided to retire, so the current negotiations will not affect me directly. I do find it sad, though, that I started my career in the Pen Ridge School District, and I'll end my career in the Pen Ridge School District being at the bottom, or almost the bottom, in terms of salary in our county. The inference one could make is that my profession is not valued by our community or our school Board. This may not be true, but to an extent, it's how I perceive it. This is not the reason I've decided to retire. The list of reasons why I retired is fairly long, and time constraints this evening will not allow me to go into detail. But if you're interested, I'd be happy to meet with any of you individually or as a group to discuss my reasons, that the "I should go" column is finally outweighed, has finally outweighed the "I should stay" column. When I analyzed my primary reason for leaving, I realized it's something that all of you have direct control over, and that's class size. I understand that reducing class size means increasing staff, and that is expensive. But if you consider the overall benefit, the gains, I believe, would outweigh the costs. By the way, when I started teaching 30 years ago, I didn't need to print my speech in font size 24, just saying. I teach second grade science, and I have 172 kids on my team, 147 of whom I teach. Let me repeat, I teach 147 12- and 13-year-olds. I start my day with 33 in a class, and I end my day with 34 students. A Pen Ridge School Board member once famously said, "A good teacher should be able to teach 40 kids in a barn." And to an-- that's a true statement, by the way. And to an extent, I actually agree with her. What's different now, though, from when I started teaching in the late 80s, and what needs to be factored in, is the increased needs of our students. For our team this year, we have 25 students with learning support IEPs, five with emotional support IEPs, five with speech issues, one with an IEP for hearing. 10 students have 504 plans. 42 receive math support. 12 receive Read 180 support. Five have occupational or physical therapy. We have eight new kids to the district, 15 students with gifted IEPs, and 23 students who have gone through the ISD process this year. This is a total of 151 names on the special needs list for my team alone. And have I mentioned that they're 12 and 13 years old? There are some people say there is no definitive data on how class size affects learning. I disagree. Just talk to the kids, or talk to any of us. A class of 24 students, which was about the norm when I began teaching, and is the NSTA recommendation for a safe science classroom, allows for more one-on-one time between students and teachers. It allows students who may need a little extra help to get it on a more regular basis. It is better for the emotional and social well-being of the students and the teachers. I would propose that spending the money needed to reduce class size would pay off in the long run, with higher standardized test scores, less stressed, more confident students, increased morale among staff and students alike, a feeling of belonging and safety in our increasingly scary world, and finally, and perhaps most importantly, an increase in the actual learning our children can accomplish. Therefore, better preparing them for the real world out there. Because isn't that our primary task? Isn't that what should be the root of all decisions made in this room? Not us versus them, not politics, not who's to blame for what isn't working, but how can we better teach our kids? I hope that you will, I hope that you will consider decreasing class size as one means to accomplish this goal. Your kids deserve it. Thank you.
Okay, the next name on the list is Ed--
Mackhouse.
Mackhouse.
Mackhouse. My name's Ed Mackhouse. I spoke last time, last meeting.
Sir, can you tell us your municipality and your connection to Pen Ridge?
Okay. I'm actually from Central Oak School District, and I'm in Buckingham, very long. And I have my son-in-law's parents live in Pen Ridge now. And so I have a connection that way. And the connection is, I was a teacher for 10 years, and I appreciate what Pen Ridge has done in standing up for law and order, responsibility from students, that standing by the thing that students can't just walk out of the school to protest certain things. And I think it's part of the educational process. I was a teacher for 10 years. I told my students that, yes, you can do wrong things, you can be bad, I can't catch you, and I can't correct you for everything that you do wrong. As a parent and as a teacher, we're doing things to help you and to try and help you correct yourself so you do what is right. And so God knows, and you know, you don't get away with anything. If you get away with doing wrong, you'll suffer, and other people will suffer in the future. I think the Pen Ridge School Board is an outstanding school board, and you stand for the students, and I appreciated the way you answered the questions of students who walked out and explained why you could not have a special privilege of them walking out without giving that right to other people. So comparing Pen Ridge to Parkland School District, with the Parkland School District, there was 100 complaints, 35 documented complaints about student crews. You put guns, heads of students, and girls mostly intimidated, and they didn't do anything. They had a new discipline policy, they coordinated with the police, and they, to correct the so-called imbalances, that they didn't, they didn't take this person's gun away, they didn't incarcerate him or set it be a record for a mental thing or for mental health. For five years, they were doing this, pushing the thing around, and no one taking responsibility. So I commend your school board for taking responsibilities. And the NRA would save millions of lives, millions of people. I know a 9-year-old uses a firearm, so-called assault weapon, to keep from his mother from being raped, and then keeping from someone breaking into a school, another 9-year-old. So it's not a question of age, it's a question of responsibility. The NRA people save a thousand, a million lives every year by defending them. And to take away millions of people's rights to defend their families--
Thank you, sir.
--is wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next name on the list is Carlo Grillo?
Yeah, I, I'll give up my time. I think this gentleman defined what I was going to say quite well.
Okay, thank you.
May I, may I, could one of you speak?
All right. The next name on the list is Andrea Tambori.
That was a just in case.
You don't want to speak? No? Okay. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on with our agenda. The first item is the Consent Calendar. Okay, is, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Dr. Yornell and seconded by Mrs. Cohen. Does anybody have any comments or questions, or anything that needs to be voted on separately? Okay, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Student Liaison Report. And Sidney Herman is here?
Yes, hi, my name is Sidney Herman. I am a senior here at Pen Ridge High School, and I am the Correspondent Secretary on our Student Council. So last Tuesday, we had a blood drive through Miller Keystone, and we signed up as many people as we could. I believe there were 120 slots, and we even had to turn some people away. So it was a very successful blood drive. And what was really unique about this is that the blood was actually going to our community, so people were helping people in our community, which was really great. A lot of people really found like inspirational in that, so that was amazing. And upcoming event for us is on May 18th. We are going to have Sidewalk Chalk Day, where students are going to be able to go outside and draw appropriate chalk designs inside of the school. So this is something we've been doing every year. It's very annual event, very popular. And yeah, that's about it. Very fun, very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Sidney. That's great news. And hopefully, pictures from Sidewalk Chalk Day will be posted and shared. That's always fun to see. All right, the next item is the President's Report. And I just have a few things to share. The Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan met on April 10th. We had a wonderful response from the community when we asked for people who wanted to serve on the Steering Committee, with 60 people interested in participating. Unfortunately, we couldn't invite everyone to the meeting. Those who are not invited may be asked to participate at a later time, and I hope that all those who responded are involved in the school or get involved in the district in other ways as well. This high level of involvement was also evident in the Comprehensive Plan survey that we had back at the end of 2017, and we had over 1,100 people answering the survey questions. In addition, our superintendent's search survey in February had an even bigger response. Over 1,300 people responded to our questions, and those results are posted on the district website. They're still there at the top of the site under the superintendent's search. The superintendent position was posted in March, and a number of highly qualified candidates applied. The Board is in the interview stage of the process now. And finally, the district administration hosted a safety meeting with the local chiefs of police last Monday, April 16th. I'm very pleased that we were able to offer that for our parents and community members, since parents had heightened concerns about safety during the past several months. People were able to submit questions and comments in advance of the meeting, and the administration addressed frequently asked questions. And after the presentation by the administration and one of the police chief, the floor was open to questions. So a lot of people got to ask questions that night and have their questions answered. And for those who could not attend, the meeting is posted on the district's new YouTube channel, so we're getting a few videos up there. So that's something we started last month as well. So that's what I have for the President's Report. The next item is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Rattigan?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Yardley. First, I'd like to thank SAP Middle School for the district office meeting room display. Second, our Takes Pride theme of the month of May will be Dependability. Students will be reminded that dependability is the quality of demonstrating reliability. A person who is dependable is one others can count on for their truthfulness and integrity. Individuals who demonstrate dependability have a reputation of doing what they say they are going to do. They persist in projects and responsibilities until the task or job is complete. And I have some points of pride to share tonight. Mr. Ken Irman, who teaches 5th grade at Siler, is among 12 finalists for Teacher of the Year Award from the Department of Education. He was nominated by a group of Siler parents and has advanced through the process. I'm sure many of you are aware of the great things Mr. Irman has done in introducing STEM concepts to his students. Over the next few months, Mr. Irman will prepare various items, including a video of one of his lessons for the judge's consideration. The winner will be named in December. Good luck to Mr. Irman. For the third year in a row, the Pen Ridge School District has been designated by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation as among the best communities for music education 2018. Only about 500 school districts, or about 4% across the United States, are awarded this honor, which is based on high commitment and access to music education. As you know, we take great pride in giving our students many opportunities to explore their interests and talents, both in and out of the classroom. One of the ways we do this is with an active music program that starts at the elementary level and continues right through high school. Every year, hundreds of children participate in band, orchestra, and choir programs that help them develop as individuals. This award is a wonderful testament to the school board, administration, and the many teachers, past and present, who have shared their passion for music with their students. They all share in the belief that a robust program in the arts is the fundamental building block of a well-rounded education program. Staying on the music theme, 20 of our middle school singers participated in the 67th Annual Bucks County Music Educators Association Music Festival. The students were Sophia Bernbaum, Emily Jo, Josephina Mason, Lacy Baccart, Sarah Supriese, Lauren Lee, Grace King, Natalie Holzheiser, Anna Di La Rosa, Ryan Martin, Scott Gordy, Rachel Wilson, Riley Bluer, Allison Southrank, Alyssa Weisberg, Naomi Shepherd, Lily Cissair, Luke Bailey, Dean Wilson, and Aiden Carey. Congratulations to all. And we also have a number of students whose achievements deserve congratulations tonight. Senior Grace Lockery scored the 200th goal of her lacrosse career. Grace has earned an appointment to the U.S. Naval Academy. Senior Bryce Schmel has been named Student of the Month for March at the Upper Bucks Technical School. Bryce is a member of the XXX Program. He also won a silver for marine repair at the Pennsylvania State Skills USA Competition. Also at Skills USA, Senior Dylan Miller won a gold medal in motorcycle repair. Seniors Jason Bedal and Holly Files were named Students of the Month for March and April by the Percoccy Rotary Club. Michigan Deal, a senior in the landscaping program at Upper Bucks Technical School, earned a $500 scholarship from the Percoccy Garden Club. Middle schoolers Joey Cullen, Penn Central, and Connor Craig, Penn North, represented Pen Ridge at the state-level geography bee, competing against 102 students who were across the state. Joey wound up in 14th place, while Connor ended up in 50th. And the Pen Ridge School District Student Council was awarded the Citizen Service Commendation by the Pen Ridge Regional Police Commission for their outstanding organization of the Remembrance Assembly honoring the Parkland, Florida victims. So congratulations to all these students.
Thank you, Dr. Rattigan. All right, we will move into Committee Reports. First one is Activities. Mrs. Cohen?
The Activities Committee did not meet, and the next meeting is scheduled for April 30th.
Okay, the Curriculum Committee. The Curriculum Committee did not have a meeting since our last board meeting, but we do have a motion that was tabled last month, so it was put onto this month's agenda. So I would like to move to approve the program improvement proposal for middle school social studies.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Dr. Yornell. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to comment that I would prefer that all of our textbooks go through the same process, the same vigorous process, whether we're redoing an old textbook or we're switching to a new textbook, because that's not currently how it's done. That would be my preference going forward.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I get-- I guess, was everybody, so everyone over here was nay? You're an aye? Okay, and then three nays? Nay, and nay, okay. So the... Okay, I heard that. So it seems that the motion fails four to five. Is that what you got, Mrs. Cullen? Yeah, so the ayes, I believe, are Dr. Yernow, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Walters, and I. And I believe everyone else is a nay, is that correct?
You know, Mrs. Yardley, I'd just like to add that this, this, this textbook has been vetted by our administration and our social studies supervisor. I don't understand what the problem is. And as I understand it, isn't it an update from our current text?
Yeah, I'm gonna let...
I'm just confused. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm gonna say I'm gonna let Dr. Scheid respond.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. Mrs. Miller, that is correct. We did go through the adoption process for this particular textbook. We did go through the process that we are supposed to go through. This is an updated version of that textbook. And to just reiterate, I know I sent the ebook to everyone so that you could take a look at it. I'm not quite sure about any of anybody's concerns other than one school board member. But I do want to reiterate that this is a very heavy book. It's an outdated book. The new book would come with ebooks and the online resources for students. This book has more current information and the text is more sophisticated. So they were the reasons why we recommended this book. It was the one that we wanted to recommend from the very beginning because, as I said, this was a book that we already, was already approved by the school board. So this is the updated version. The version that students currently use is 2007. And again, with the technology that's been approved in our middle schools, this book would have the e-version for students so they're not carrying around a huge textbook like that. And it isn't the only reason. And if you go through the assessments of this particular upgrade, they're far more sophisticated in terms of critical thinking as well. So in terms of the process, I think it was a very thoughtful process. And I thank Mr. Verberka and the social studies teacher for going through that process. And I fully supported it. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that a process was done. And for the reasons that I've just expressed, that is why we recommend this book.
And Dr. Scheid, I really appreciate your thoroughness on this. And I'm not understanding why it is not being approved. But thank you again for all your hard work in getting this textbook in place for our students. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm not understanding either because if there was a problem with the process, it should have been discussed at the curriculum meeting back in February. And the reason that people wanted to wait on the vote was because they wanted to see the textbook. So I don't understand, there was never any concern with the process. It was always, we want to see the textbook. And now that you saw the textbook, now you're going back to saying that there was a problem with the process.
I would just like to say that it is not the same process if you are getting a new edition, as you had stated before, as it is if you are getting a completely different book. And to say that this was somehow gone through extensively when we didn't even have a copy of the book when it was first proposed to us and no one could have read it. How do you propose a book that we're supposed to approve when the people proposing it never even had an opportunity to read it just because it was the book we had before? So to suggest that the process is the same, it's not the same. I think that we need to make people work, I think that we need to make the companies that want to sell us materials work harder and send us all of those different materials and be able to vet all of the materials. Just because we liked something 20 years ago doesn't mean it's still the best today. And I think it needs to be vetted in that process. And I also read both textbooks and I liked the old one better. The online resources were available. This wasn't selected blindly. The board did not have the textbook and I absolutely, I mean, that is the truth. We did not have the hardback when we were at the Curriculum Committee. But the, the online resources were available. It wasn't that we couldn't see what, what the book looked like or anything like that. So the process isn't the same from original textbook approval and adoption, which was, which was done in 2007 and the board approved that book. So it was a thoughtful process. We did have resources to look at. And I apologize that the textbook wasn't available at the curriculum meeting, although we did pass around the textbook to, and I know some board members wanted to look at it. And every board member received the ebooks to look at every chapter, every module. Thank you.
Again, Dr. Scheid, I thank you for your thoroughness.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Scheid. And I guess we will discuss this further at the next curriculum meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Yardley.
What we can do and hopefully get our students updated resources for this fall. Because I believe now that it might be, might not be possible to get them updated resources. Mr. Verberka?
I have a question as well.
Yeah, okay.
Is there danger of not having this in place in the fall?
All right, Mrs. Miller, Mr. Verberka is...
I'm sorry, but we're supposed to come in before the vote instead of after the vote? I'm really confused because we're not really following the proper procedure.
Well, occasionally we have a question after the vote.
No, we don't. It's before, that's why there's comments and questions and then people vote. So I don't know why we weren't having this discussion before and that was the opportunity.
Well, I think people didn't know...
Are you trying to start the discussion?
No, you can discuss away. You're just not...
Mrs. Clemmons, you're talking about the social studies supervisor and I am the social studies supervisor.
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about our...
So I did this process. I went through this process. So if you have questions about this process, you can address that to me. What is the problem with the process exactly?
She's not supposed to discuss that. No, this is not the place.
First of all, we're, this is completely, completely out of order. Second of all, we, to suggest that it was the same vetting process when no one had access to the material to read it, how is it vetted if you couldn't read it? First of all, because that wasn't what I was told. I was told that no one could read it.
So what is it about the textbook that you're concerned?
And secondly, when we did, when we, when I had the opportunity to read it, I, first of all, I liked the other text better. I think that this text is more dated and it's going to be outdated in four years because it's more specific and the other one was more general. But honestly, I don't have to justify...
It's the 2019 copyrights.
Yeah, and it's, it's a geography book. Look, I'm not going to get into it with you because this is, this is not the forum...
So we can just, yeah, so let's just stop the debate. And Mr. Verberka, do you have anything else you would like to add? And then otherwise, we will just, we will move it to the Curriculum Committee and continue our discussion there.
Well, Mrs. Yardley, I'm just curious because five people have voted no for this textbook. So I'm just curious as to what is it about the textbook that you disagree with? We've already been through committee.
Actually, we weren't through...
And these concerns were not raised.
We didn't have the book.
We didn't have the committee meeting, so...
Okay, so now that you've read the book, what, what was in it that...
Okay, we will, we will continue. And the reason I feel like, I mean, there was no indication before in the, I mean, we could have had the discussion before the vote if people had given an indication that it was voting against it. You said, going forward, I would like to have the same process for all the books. That gave no indication that it was going to be voted down.
It's a different process.
Okay.
And it was, I mean, Dr. Scheid, he even specifically said it was a different process. Now we're going to say it's the same process?
We can't hear?
Yeah, can you put your mic on, please?
Okay, well, I, do you have anything else that you would like to add, Mr. Verberka, that's not a question?
I guess my, my final comment would be that I think we're in very dangerous territory here when we have five board members voting no on a textbook that was approved by the social studies supervisor, the director of curriculum, and the 7th grade social studies teachers. So I would have been, you know, I'm very interested to know what is the problem with that textbook. And I think we're in a very dangerous place if we're starting to say that we can't approve certain textbooks for whatever reason it might be. This is a well-received textbook. This is a well-documented textbook. This is a brand-new update, 2019. And so it's a great resource for our kids and we are literally taking that resource away from our kids at this point.
The only thing I'll add to this discussion is that the board is legally obligated to approve a textbook before it's, before it's adopted. It has to carry five votes. So whether all of the folks in this room agree or disagree that this is the right textbook, the final authority rests with the school board to approve textbooks. So whatever textbook is going to be used is going to have to garner five votes. So I appreciate what the professionals are saying, but the board has final authority. It's in the school code. There aren't five votes. So my suggestion is that the board take this up at the next available committee meeting and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cox. So we will discuss this, this through our curriculum agenda. And the next curriculum meeting is scheduled for May 7th. Okay, the next committee report is Facilities. Mrs. Vanis-Clemmons?
The Facilities Committee met on April 11th. We have one item on the agenda. It's a motion to approve obsolete items, A through E.
Okay, the second?
I'm sorry.
All right, taken by Mrs. Vanis-Clemmons, seconded by Mr. Kraus. Any comments or... Any comments or questions on that agenda item? Okay, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Vanis-Clemmons?
The next Facilities Committee is scheduled for May 2nd.
Okay, next committee report is Finance. Dr. Yernow?
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. The Finance Committee meeting did have a meeting on April 11th, 2018. That night, we discussed the usual approval of contracts and perhaps even more importantly, the budget. We had three budget presentations by different people and a general discussion about the direction the board wanted to go in terms of finalizing the budget before the proposed preliminary budget is to be voted on on May 14th, presumably. So that's what's in the minutes. Tonight, I have two agenda items. The first is to approve the approval of a request for proposal concerning the solicitor for the board. And I make that as a motion.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, if there's no second, then the motion doesn't go anywhere.
Thank you. I'll move on to the approval of contracts. There are contracts, as discussed on the night of April 11th, to be approved. Contracts are listed as A through H. And I make a motion that we approve those contracts as listed and discussed at that meeting.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Yernow, seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you very much. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held along with the Facilities Committee meeting on the night of April, sorry, May 2nd.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Yernow. Next committee report is Mrs. Miller. The IU Committee Report.
Thank you. I'm going to keep this brief since I'm on the phone, but I just wanted to make a couple mentions. I'd like to recognize Catherine Dolitzer, an 11th grade student whose self-portrait art piece made it into the Student Art Gallery hosted by the, by the Bucks County IU. So congratulations to Catherine. It was an awesome piece. Also, I'd like to put forth that the Run, Walk, or Roll Fund Run Five K Race to raise funds for the IU's Education Foundation will be held this Saturday. So please consider joining me for that. Also, our next meeting will be held on May 14th instead of May 15th because of the primary and several of the board directors want to poll. So that will be held May 14th instead of May 15th. Thank you, Mrs. Yardley, that's it.
Yep. Thank, thank you, Mrs. Miller. I don't know if you noticed, that's our next board meeting as well, so...
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, well, so we have a conflict with that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know. You'll have to talk to Dr. Hoffman about that.
Oh, no, okay. We were just doing my phone too, so, okay.
Yeah, well, hopefully, hopefully you can work it out. Hopefully, and maybe with the timing, something like that, so. All right.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Thank you, Mrs. Yardley.
Yep, all right. The next committee report is the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you, Mrs. Verberka.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed policy.
That's all right.
Oh, personnel. Oh, I'm sorry, I just skipped way ahead. I'm just trying to move the meeting along, so. All right. I'm sorry.
Thank you for that.
Okay, Mrs. Cullen, personnel.
Okay. The Personnel Committee also did not meet and the next Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for April 30th at 6:30 in this room.
Okay, Mrs. Miller, back to you, policy.
Thank you, thank you. Our next policy meeting is scheduled for April 30th. And we'll review our second reading for the policies we discussed last meeting. And then, I think it's two more, so, thank you. So April 30th is our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we are on to the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. The VOTEC JOC did meet on April 19th, which time I'd like to thank Dr. Rattigan for leading the search for a new director with the three sending schools, Quagertown, Palisades, and Penrich. And we have concluded that search for a new director. Mr. Jeff Sweden was unanimously approved by the JRC. Mr. Sweden will begin transitioning with Mr. Wagenheller and is scheduled to start on July 2nd. And from state competitions, we had three first-place winners that are going on to Nationals in June in Indianapolis. The winners are Dylan Miller, Small Engines, Jordan Myers from Quagertown Health Occupations, and prepared speech, Sarah Leibel from Penrich. And that's really all I have. The next meeting is scheduled for May 17th. Up at the Upper Bucks VOTEC.
Thank you. The next committee report is Act 48. Mrs. Walters? Oh, did I skip, oh, sorry. Technology, Mr. Kraus.
Just keep moving along, sorry. We'll go back.
All right, the Technology Committee did not meet. The next meeting is scheduled for May 7th. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Walters, Act 48.
Okay, the Act 48 Committee did not meet in April. We meet again on May 10th.
Okay, thank you. And the next committee report is Penrich Area Coordinating Committee. Mrs. Dolan and Ms. Kilari.
We did not meet either. I think it snowed that day. And our next meeting is the 26th? Yep, 26th.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is Old Business. Anyone have any Old Business? I just, I wanted to share that tomorrow night is the Penrich Community Education Foundation. A lovely evening held at the Sellersville Theater begins at 6:30 with a reception and 7:30 with the event. And the people being honored are Mr. Nicholas Schoonover from the high school, Mr. Glenn Wonder from, it's North Middle School, and Mr. Daryl Lowry. And he was a longtime custodian and now is a game worker right at the, at the football games. So they will be honored tomorrow night. So it's still possible to get tickets. You can get tickets at the door. So if anybody is interested, it really is a lovely evening and many of the student groups are performing. The jazz band, the chamber choir, the, I believe there's some selections from the Addams Family and then the acapella group, the Boys Acapella Group is also performing. Anybody else have Old Business? Okay, so we will move into New Business. And we have the Penrich School District Special Education Plan Report. So I will move to approve the Penrich School District Special Education Plan Report July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mrs. Yardley.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mrs. Miller. Any comments or questions?
I was going to comment, I'd like to make a motion to table it because we just got to having to review all of it. And if we have a special meeting at some other point. And if we have a special meeting at another point.
I'll second. Okay, so there was a motion to table by Ms. Kildare and seconded by Mrs. Vanis Clemmons.
Let me just add, and I'll let Dr. Wayorka talk to us about this because we are under state guidelines to approve this by a certain date. Dr. Wayorka?
Right, we shared this as an informational item as a draft to the board at the last board meeting, March 26th, 2018. So it was shared on that date and then it was posted on the website for public review and comment on March 27th. So at the March 26th board meeting, it was shared with the board. And I shared that the timeline was, we had to have it on the website for public comment from March 27th through today. We needed to have board approval today. And then, May 1st was our deadline to submit it to the Bureau of Special Education. So we don't have any other option with that deadline of May 1st. So that's why we backed up the process so that there would be time for review.
I didn't hear you, Dr. Wayorka. How long has it been on the website?
It was on the website from March 27th through today. It was added to our agenda at like 4 o'clock this afternoon and I haven't, and I know some of us didn't have time to read it since 4 o'clock. And even when I tried to click on it, it didn't open. So I'm sure we can have a special board meeting. We have an activities personnel and policy. So maybe we can just add a special board meeting that night. But that's my comment. We can call for vote.
And it's a motion to table. That's pending a vote.
Okay, does anybody have any other comments before we take a vote?
What about it was changed? Nothing was changed. So nothing was changed in the month that it's been up for comment?
Yeah, I know. Yes, it was shared as an informational item at the last meeting, so... All right, any other comments? All right, so the motion on the table is a, the motion, the motion, the open motion right now is a motion to table this. And I guess my comment would be, so if people vote to table it, that would require either us to miss the date or we would have to, as Mrs. Vanis Clemmons, set up a special board meeting. So people should take that into consideration, so...
Is not funding attached to our rejection of this or acceptance of this?
I don't know, what would happen if we missed the deadline? Yeah, Dr. Wayorka?
I'm not sure what the repercussions are. Funding is tied to approval of the special education plan.
Okay, all right, so I will...
This has been on the website, this has been on the website.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mrs. Miller. All right, I'm going to call the vote. So this is a vote to table the motions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay? Okay, it seems like the motion to table fails with a vote of two to seven. Is that correct?
If it's the same.
Is that, did you vote, yeah, okay, all right, so that fails. So we go back to the original motion, which is to, right, I can go back to the original motion? So I go back to the original motion, which was moved by Mrs. Yardley and seconded by Mrs. Miller to approve the special education plan report, July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries seven to. Okay, I will move on to announcements.
I have, I have new business, please.
Who does?
I want to make a motion to amend the agenda to vote immediately on a motion to terminate the solicitor, Eastburn and Gray, as district solicitor and expand the duties of Eckert Siemens to serve as the interim district solicitor at their existing rate until a permanent solicitor can be found.
I'll second.
Mrs. Yardley, I didn't hear that motion.
Okay. I don't know if I can repeat it. Mrs. Cullen read it and it's not, it's not on the agenda.
Maybe Mrs. Cullen could...
Can you read it again louder?
Or louder, or speaking into the mic, yeah.
I'm making a motion to terminate the agreement with Eastburn and Gray effective immediately as the solicitor and instead transfer the duties over to Eckert Siemens under their rate that we already have them contracted for until we can find a permanent solicitor.
Okay. So there was a motion by Mrs. Cullen, seconded by Mrs. Vanis Clemmons. Questions or comments?
Oh, we need to open it up to public comment.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
When we add something to the agenda that's, when we add something that's not an agenda item, we have to open the floor to public comment?
Before the board comments?
Before we vote. So is there any public comment in the audience? Is that correct, Mr. Cox?
I believe the policy says that, so, sure. Folks can comment about the solicitor.
I think it's just on the motion, not its only pertaining to this, so I should just point the vote.
Okay, so I'll open the floor to public comment about the motion that Mrs. Cullen made. Any public comment? Just, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to come back to board comment after.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I don't see or hear any public comment, so I will come back to board comment. Mrs. Miller?
I would just like to tell you, I am so ashamed of this board right now. This came out of nowhere. This was not discussed in our board... Not discussed in the executive session. I'm really disappointed in this board. This motion is coming from nowhere and it's catching me with those hands down. This is really unprofessional. I'm sorry, I just have to say that. Thank you.
This motion, there was a motion on the agenda for an RFP. This is not coming out of nowhere. We...
I brought an item for an RFP.
Yes, there's...
And this is obviously back from top. And this is, I think this is violating some, I'm not sure what it's violating, but not all board or board directors were involved in this discussion. That's the end of my comment, thank you.
Okay, so again, there was a, there was an item on the agenda for an RFP, which we already did discuss, obviously. And it's not required. When you hire an attorney for something, you don't actually have to have an RFP, but we decided to do that. And the motion for that failed. And I think it's in the best interest that we, you know, for reasons that can't be discussed for confidentiality, that we would instead take this matter this evening. So it's not coming out of nowhere. I think that's a disingenuous statement. And it was something that we had all discussed together. There was discussion.
I have a comment. So Eckert Siemens is the firm of Ryan Cassidy? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the firm that we have.
Okay, and has anybody discussed with him or with his firm if they're willing to take on this solicitor role? In the meantime, has anybody discussed that with him?
They do offer solicitor services and are able to do that in the interim.
Okay, but what if they're too busy to take over a day-to-day? I mean, the solicitor is involved with the school district on an almost daily basis. Is that correct? Dr. Radigan? So how do we even know that they're able to take on this job?
I had asked if they had solicitor services and if that would be something that we could expand, if we could utilize if, in the meantime, until we hired a new solicitor.
So you contacted the lawyer without talking to anybody about whether they could take on our solicitor services?
I asked him a question, which is perfectly within my right to ask him a question.
So you asked him if his firm had solicitor services? Or you asked him if his firm was able to offer solicitor services at this time to our school district? I think they're two very different...